I would say that we lost Jody Miller this week. And just let's take a moment of silence and just look at her family, up to prayers, and she's going to be sorely missed. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. I'll open up this September 16th evening Commissioners Meeting we have. The city from the Auditor's Office, all three Commissioners, and the County Attorney is not with us this evening, she's available. So we have, first on the agenda, the bird ban. Where's Dawn? Okay.
Thank you.
You can say whatever you like.
Yeah. As soon as the Commissioners' meetings are over this evening, those of you who are here, most of you who are here are going to get an email on it. Marshall, we're kind of following the lead of Marshall County. They've already went ahead and posted Thursday from their Commissioner meeting this morning. You have to have Commissioners' approval to state a bird ban right now. I hate to say it, but it's indefinite until the weather returns. I will be notifying our National Weather Service that they report to us, we report to them. I'll be notifying them as soon as meetings are over, along with our state Web VOC. I already talked with Lake IEM today, and I did give the blessings from as many of our volunteer and our paid fire chiefs that I could. They have their portion, I have a news release, I have one for your press release, that way you guys can disperse it, and I don't have to worry about getting hold of you guys also. So there are state codes, IC codes, anybody wants to know or needs to know, you can get ahold of me, and I can tell you where to find all those and/or tell you what they are. I spent most afternoon taking care of that. Fire department is there. So if one of your fire departments goes and responds to your bird ban, it's what they say and that's what goes. So don't get in arguments with them. The city and the county will back our fire departments up on what they say happens and what they say goes. You may get questioned, and I'm just going to tell you real quick, in the paperwork that Commissioners will be signing, everybody knows that the big bonfire for Rochester School Homecoming is this Friday. That's already been addressed with TJ, he's already, TJ the fire chief here in Rochester, he was already planning on going and completely surrounding and supervising that. So that is our only, only bonfire exception. We all know that Trail of Courage, what do they do out there? They cook. They use fire. So what state code says, just so everybody knows, you can handle it when that next-door neighbor says, "Well, dah 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 dah." State code says at Trail of Courage, they'll be cooking most of the time on the fires. They can cook. They can have a fire, it needs to be covered, and they can cook. So that's it. And other than that, everybody else is, we're a prime tender out there in our fields right now, so. Other than that, EMAs, our typical regular meetings has been going on. I'm just tired today. I've been around the state of Indiana and Chicago all in three days, so. I will be gone next week. I put in travel, I don't know if you guys can get the hell to care. I will be out of the office. Good thing is I have 20 great volunteers and I will be, still be our first response. I'll be in class, still in the state, and I'll be first response by phone, and then I will go from there. That's next week, and then I have a week also in October that I have class for. So that's it, guys.
One question. The end of the bird ban decided by TJ, is that who it is, fire chief?
No, it'll, well, it'll be a conglomeration, and National Weather Service, like right now, when I go back to the office and post out, I will send out where we're at as far as the National Weather Service and what they're saying, you know, and where they've put us. Don't be surprised if we don't go under, like, a state northern region. It's just we're jumping, you know, and we're saying, okay, ours is in place.
But who makes the call in Fulton County that the bird ban that goes away?
I would go with National Weather Service, period. I, as far as me or TJ or you guys, we'll just, we'll come to you and say, okay, this is what National Weather Service is saying, I'll bring it to you guys, I'll call TJ, I'll call the other volunteer fire chiefs, and make sure that everybody's in agreement. So that's what I did today. Yeah, you'll be the, you will be the final, final lifted ban.
I just thought it should be the fire chief, that's definitely what I wanted.
Yeah, yeah. So the Commissioners have the final say. And I did, I did tag Trent in this also, you know, so, but you guys are the final say, final say.
Okay.
If you say no, it's still too dry, and you perceive me and TJ and everybody, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Dawn, real quick, do you happen to know what the penalty is for someone that burns during this?
She counted for you.
It's not in there?
Oh, it's not in there?
No, the I, the Indiana IC codes are even 300 series, so if you go to your 300 series, you'll find those, and there's a couple of those in there. But I would say whatever, at that point, once that it's enforced, they won't have to go through a little bit of the codeaus. I'm sure it's a monetary penalty, so.
Just curious.
Yep.
Thank you.
But the high school can still have their bonfire, right?
Yes.
Where were you at?
Well, safe.
Well, it was six o'clock when I sat down.
Yes.
And you'd already been halfway through your spiel, so.
TJ's gonna, he's already, and that's the only exception, is the school's bonfire.
You started by the official clock, that was given at six o'clock, okay? So just saying, just.
Mine was Android time, so.
Oh, wow.
Okay, I've got this countywide bird ban on September 16th, 2024, whereas Fulton County has been, has had dry conditions and warm and dry weather, is anticipated to continue for several weeks as of September 16th, 2024, and whereas grass fields fires have occurred due to the weather conditions, and whereas fire and emergency personnel as well as Fulton County Commissioners agree that open burning will increase the risk of injuries and property caused by fires that can be initiated by open burning, and whereas if Fulton County applying bird ban affecting certain activities, is an appropriate public safety response for the fire hazards presented by the current weather conditions. Now though, for we, Fulton County Board of Commissioners, declare pursuant to the provisions of IFC 307.1.1 that a bird ban shall be issued in the county, and that we hereby invoke and declare those portions of Indiana Code which are applicable to the conditions and that have caused issuance of this declaration to be in full force and effect in the county for the exercise of all necessary emergency authorized personnel. Emergency authority for protection of the lives and property of the people of Fulton County. We also declare that effective immediately, the following activities are prohibited in Fulton County: open burning of any kind using conventional fuel such as wood or other combustible material with the exception of grills, fueled by charcoal, briquettes or propane charcoal from permitted grill, should not be removed from the grills until the coals have been thoroughly extinguished; two, the burning of debris such as timber, vegetation, including debris that results from building construction activities. Reference, is hereby made to all appropriate law, statutes, ordinances, and resolutions, and particularly into section 307.1.1 of the Indiana Fire Code. All public offices and employees of Fulton County are hereby directed to exercise the utmost diligence and the discharge of dues required of them for the duration of emergency and the execution of emergency laws, regulations, directives, whether state or local or resident are called upon and directed to comply with necessary emergency measures, to cooperate with the public, officials of disaster services, forces, executing emergency operations, plans, and to obey and comply with lawful directions of properly identified officers. This bird ban shall be in effect until further notice. And that also comes with the two exceptions of the school bonfire and this Trail of Courage which falls under other laws, so. Okay. Any questions on that? I think a motion is approved.
Something?
I have a favor. That motion carries through. So we have Mr. Two Minute Lake, Steve Williams. We're going to have to check that Android phone out.
Unofficial time.
They started early, they're like, watch your time.
Thank you, Steve.
Steve, stick together. Your system's running, my phone says, yeah, three minutes to us. Continue, Steve.
Thanks, sir. So I just wanted to come and follow up with you in reference to the ARP funds that the fairgrounds have received. And we have exceeded our fund limit, so that's a good thing. And I have copies for all of you in the Auditor's Office as well. And we will be sending a finalized digital copy to the Auditor's Office by the end of month, so. But if you happened to go during the fair this year, or if you happened to go two weekends ago to Tractor Pool, you would have saw the grandstands are finalized, with an exception of the south end of the grandstands, there's a fence that's still has been put up. But that's finalized, all the other projects on the fairgrounds that were referenced to in the ARP funds are finalized. And we did get the final bill for the PA system that was upgraded and throughout all the animal barns. That was a sizable project, more than what we were anticipating, but we were able to financially accomplish that through this fund. So that's pretty much all I was wanting to address as far as the ARP. There are other projects that we are looking at. We do have a sizable amount of money that was raised some years ago to go towards a possible building upgrade or replacement, and we have changed gears, and we're talking about one particular project to use that money for, and hopefully we can use that money actually as, oh, what's the word I'm trying to look for? At least for start, sometimes a start.
A match.
A match funds to apply towards, so that we could use this project for year round use. That's what we're aiming for, so. But as far as the board, everybody's happy, we are down as far as board members, but we are looking for, I would prefer to have weak minds and strong backs, but if anybody is interested in joining the fair board, we'll take the applications. So we have plenty of minds and plenty of ideas for now. But you guys have any questions for me?
I know, I just appreciate all you guys have done out there. It looks good.
For Tractor Pool, what, last week or whenever it was, was it a great success?
Yeah, two weekends ago, my brother did not finalize the numbers as far as kind of admission part, but we were guessing 1600 to 1800 people.
Great.
So between two sessions and all the holders and their family and all that.
It's a nice string.
It was.
I actually talked to him this morning about it, and he was saying that he had people staying in the motels, our local motels, helping out the economy, so that's very great.
Yep, yep. And there was, even with the four food vendors that we had there, they ran out, two of them ran out twice of food, and we saw a lot of carry-in coming as well, so. But, yeah, it was a good success for the first year, and it's already on the books for next year as well, so.
Great.
That's awesome.
Anyways, if you have any other questions, just ask away. Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Steve.
Want a copy of this?
Okay, we have department updates.
Thank you.
Brittany Thompson, EMAs.
Thanks for the long day, you're doing a good job.
Oh, good evening. I really don't have anything, mostly because I don't know what to present, whatnot.
So anyways, first poll lead was fantastic, everything went great. We had a dispatcher whose grandfather passed away, so we worked our way and navigated through some time off issues. Week two hasn't started off too great, but we have the resources, thanks to the Sheriff's Department, to extend some support to the dispatchers if they needed, due to the loss of Jody. I canceled the class that I was supposed to go to this week, I just didn't feel like the timing was right, with being new at the center, I felt like being at the center was where I should be right now, so we'll possibly reschedule that when they offer that again. Let's see. I do have a paper that needs sign, I don't think it's anything formal, it's just there's a program called Insight that dispatchers have access to, and typically I would sign that for whom I hire, but I can't sign it for myself, so they just told me that one of the Commissioners needs to sign it, so it's nothing, nothing major, I don't even know now at the time, but. Aside from that, I guess in the future, do you have things that I should be sharing? Would that be helpful, and otherwise, you've been doing great?
When you get into a memorial, listen to reports, or when you get some numbers for the month, and stuff like that, but right now, you just concentrate on.
All right. Yeah, training's going good. A lot of things I'm doing myself, I don't specifically have a checklist, you know, to do, so I've been going through old emails, trying to figure out who maybe I should contact and who I shouldn't. So aside from that.
Barry was in here just a little bit ago, we had a few minute conversations, he said he'd been doing interviews.
Yes, we did interviews today.
Get your staff up to full speed, so that's a good thing, and got some policies to write and some stuff like that, but.
Yep, we have our work cut out for us, kind of starting fresh and starting new, and just kind of build from ground up, and looking forward to building relationships and doing good things.
Sounds good.
That's all I got.
Thank you, Brittany.
All right, thank you.
Real quick, I'll expand just a little bit. Brittany and I attended a lunch on last Friday for Keylon for their festival coming up in two weeks, and Brittany's jumped right in on a lot of the actual different functions in the community too, so we'll be helping cover that. They're actually, I don't know if you're very familiar with, but they expanded to Thursday evening also, so they're going Thursday evening, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
Is that next week?
Not this weekend, as Trail of Courage gets the next one. Yeah, so, and then EMAs obviously interacting with that too, and then we go right into Chili Cook Off.
So that'll be Thursday, Friday, and Saturday?
Yeah, yeah, they've actually opened it up for Thursday and Saturday. Thursday evening.
Thursday evening.
And Sunday, right?
Yeah, Sunday, Sunday is the car show, I believe.
Yeah, oh, so it's four day.
Oh, yeah. I think so, and the car show's Sunday?
I'm pretty sure.
Yeah.
And then yours is on Saturday.
Yeah, parade's Saturday, so.
John, how are you? Good evening, John.
Good evening.
Good job.
Pretty gentleman.
Good job, man.
I've got a few things for you. I don't have any permits tonight.
Wow.
So that's, yeah, that is unusual. We've had quite a few. Guys have been patching holes, running the brush cutter, we finished pugging. Today they did go up on 700 North, Rick will know where this is, West Russian Center, there was a bad spot, correct me if I leveled that up.
Yeah, that was good, I had to be able to get the real.
Real bad. Somebody's on a wreck there.
I'm glad you fixed that, I was aiming to tell you that, I forgot.
You do it.
Good, thank you, John.
We bumped, ground bumps off of Old 31 North last week.
So much better.
Yes, thank you.
I've gotten a lot of phone calls on that, thanking us for doing that. Tomorrow they're going to stripe it.
Good.
Got that going on, and then we're going to start running the abspill machine here pretty soon, shoulder and community crossing roads.
Okay.
And then we started bio sealing today, that bio was sore down on the community crossing roads that were done last year, so.
So working out real well, I mean, is that likely?
Yeah, we're seeing, and I think John will agree, we're seeing an extension on the pavement life by applying that.
Good deal.
So I think it's, I think it's well worth the small investment that's in it.
Yeah, yeah.
So last week, or I guess it's been two weeks now, September 5th, we had the final inspection for Old 31 South. Dave was there, I think everything went good, everything on the checklist was, come out accordingly. I do have a letter that needs to be signed by the three of you, confirming that you're satisfied, so we can close that out. I guess, Wes, you two, you guys satisfied yet or not?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Good. But a motion is approved, the Indiana Farm Transportation Report, the contract for final inspection recommendation for acceptance of contract R-4.1917. So moved.
Second.
Paul Barrett, question carries through.
I think I talked about the community crossings projects, but Brooks has been paving, they've got 900 West paved and striped, they've got 600 North paved, I think they're on 400 now, and they plan to wrap it up by the weekend.
We're going to do it.
So going through Bruce and Lake Bruce, end of the week.
Just to throw in a comment, talk about where you've been, I've had more people saying thank you for Fletcher's Lake. There was that one little star right there, and man, it was rough, washed out.
Yeah.
I've had a lot of people saying, boy, I should have let you get that done.
Yeah, yeah, they had a little bit left over and they finished up there.
That was, I knew it was much appreciated.
Yeah, we thought that would be a good spot to do.
It was.
Big bang for.
For not much stuff.
Yes, yes. On the buildings, work has begun on the shop out there, insulated that, they've got, I'd probably say half of the siding on, it really looks nice, that building, looking like a new one, granted it's not.
Maybe a few more years on it.
Yeah, I think it was a good investment. The Keylon Assault Building that I asked permission to roof, that's completed, it's done.
You've got that done.
Yeah, so we've been moving right along on those projects. Western Star Trucks, we ordered two, probably this time last year, I can't remember. One of them is going to be delivered to the shop tomorrow morning, and then we'll take that up to WA Jones, be upfitted. And then the other one probably isn't too far behind, I don't know, but at least we're getting one of them.
Were those tans or singles, I forget?
They're single axles this time around. We're basically trying to keep the fleet about half and half, because there's applications where we need single.
I tried to remember replacing.
I believe 44, 24, I think.
Okay.
I did almost go home to it.
Okay, sounds about right. Old Mack?
Yeah, might be, no, 22 was last time, we've already invested, but yes, a couple, one of the old Macks and an International.
Okay.
So. I did have a request from the town of Keylon, each year they borrow the rubber tire roller that we use for chip seal for their garden tractor pole to roll down their track, maybe 20 poles, 23 years, but ask your permission to plug these out. I have an employee request, I have an employee who's asking for 30 days, he's out of FMLA, he's had some other issues this year, he used his time up, but he needs 30 days without pay.
And you run that through Christina Homs, yeah?
Yes, this is what she's told me to come and do.
And entertain a motion to approve, John, your employer request for 30 days without pay, that's fine.
So moved.
Second. Paul Barrett, question carries through.
You got it.
Okay. And then the last thing I have, I have, I sent you two proposals, one from RQAW, which Scott Clay is here tonight, representing his proposal, and the other one is from USI. They're both for bridges 170 and 94. What I'd like to do is probably go after 170 and put it on the federal aid call, comes out later this year.
So you want to do, just do the one?
Yes, is what I'm kind of after. If you want to approve both, but I'm not going to engage the second one at this time, then I want to go after one for this call.
Okay.
Of course, that'd be five years out, the actual call would be, but we got it, we need an engineering study for the application.
Okay.
So I don't know if you guys had time to look over the vote proposals.
Yeah. Where was that, Matt, road number place?
170, the one that I'm wanting to go after is County Route 1000 West, between 550 South and 400 South over the Mill Creek. And then 94 is on 250 East, south of 650 South, right there around Naomi Lake.
Oh, yes.
Basically south where the trees.
Okay, but you want to do this 170, is the one you're worried about?
It's the worst one.
Okay.
We're hoping it makes it to five years.
Okay.
It should, but.
The quotes was, I reckon I can bring mine.
You had a quote from RQAW, 9,500 for each bridge, and then USI was at 7,500 for each bridge. And basically their quotes were the same, they're basically apples to apples.
Anything Scott wants, anything you want to say, Scott?
Well, we had made a proposal for both bridges. I communicated with John, and he had mentioned that he might not want to pay for it till next year. We will do the billing in, on December 15th, so he can decide if he's got extra money for this year, or if he wants to pay for it next year, that would be an option. I know the call's coming up in December, so we just want to get working on it as soon as possible, so.
Guys, any questions for Scott?
I don't. Oh, so, the, I know the last time, we had, we had, we had a consultant here and one that wasn't for the other one, we brought in the consultant, do we have here? Do we want to do that tonight?
Does, I'm going to ask John, does that matter on deferring the money, is that, is that an issue for you?
Yeah, whoever we'd have to go with, we're probably going to have to do that, is that appropriate more money in, so that would be a benefit, spreading it over into the next year's budget.
Hi, Jerry.
$2,000, but whatever, I mean, what do you think I think? John says it's apples to apples.
It's your guys' call.
I know, it's kind of hard, I mean, Scott's done a great job for us, past two, it's $2,000.
And I'm sure that if we approve maybe one today, I could probably talk to my office about trying to drop the price on the second one, to make up for it, so. If that helps.
With this, I guess Scott's here, and I know we had another one that was, there's about $1,000 difference, and we went the other way. I'll make a, I'll make a motion if we get this one to RQW. Can I second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Be careful on precedent, you're on big spreads on good companies. I'm all favor. Motion carries through.
I think I need a signature.
Is that just on the one bridge or? Yeah, one bridge. One.
Definitely be this one here. See how they do for us, go from there on the next one.
Nice to get somebody.
I want to hold off on the second one till next call.
Perfect.
Thank you. I think we have a better chance, and we discussed this too. I think we have a better chance, and we discussed this too, going after the one, because it's worse, and with the other one, you might reject it. Because the one isn't as bad. I think our odds are better going after the worst one. Just you?
Yeah.
And I think that's everything I have for you tonight, unless you have any questions.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Jerry, Porter, how are you this evening?
I'm all right, are you guys doing okay too?
Yep.
It's nice to be here, sun was pretty today. Just to let you know, our latest statistics for Fulton County, effective today, we've had a hundred and eleven deaths total in the county. Of that, sixty-one females have passed away and fifty males. Of that, forty-one coroner's calls, so there's been eighteen females and twenty-three females. It's kind of ironic or very different that their coroner calls are dominated by the males, but there's actually been ten more females, or eleven more females that have passed away this calendar year so far, which I know that can change, we got three months left. But we are down with our deaths for this year, which is a great thing. Our coroner's office is investigating thirty-six percent of all the deaths that occur in Fulton County, so that's a little over a third. We've got three autopsies, we're waiting on results. Most of our deaths are natural, but we have had eight accidents, three of those being falls that are very dangerous. We've had a couple overdoses, and then we've had three motor vehicle accidents, and one of those motor vehicle accidents actually fell back to influence a heavy use of drugs. So, so anyway, altogether, eight accidents, we've had five suicides, a homicide, and for our procedures then, we've conducted three labs out at Woodlawn Hospital. We've done draws for twelve toxicologies that go to the National Office down access in Indianapolis. And so total, with our autopsies and then the ones we've drawn and conducted, there's been twenty-four toxicology draws for this year out of our forty-one deaths. We've had twelve autopsies, but we've actually paid for one extra, because one was carried over from the middle of summer twenty twenty-three that occurred in another county. I'm all excited, a week from Friday, we have our coroner's training board meeting in Indianapolis. We're going to review and go over our conferences that we had back in June, we're going to troubleshoot, we're going to make things even better. We're improving every year, and we, every year we get more people coming, and we are still number two in the United States with the number of attendees, Colorado, I think, is the only state that's ahead of us. So, we're real proud of that. We like to keep things interesting and informative and very useful to everybody that's there. We were checked out by our environmentalist Wyatt Dyson a couple weeks ago, and he passed, I wanted to let you know that. So, that was good, he checked all of our drainage systems and sinks and all that kind of stuff, so, did pass that. L E P C, we're going to do a modified in-person scene study, and that's going to be happening on October twenty-sixth, we're excited about that. It'll be held down in Wayne Township, near the fire station there, and the cows aren't far away either, so I thought I'd let you know that. But, this is one thing that helps us to get money brought back into the county for other emergencies and things like that, so. We've had very successful tabletops, we're taking another step to make it more in-person, and then we'll have a full exercise probably the following year. But, we're excited to do that, we're working on that intensely. Indiana Department of Health is coming out with their mini grants soon, I've been chomping at the bit, usually we, those come out usually in May or June, but they've kind of held back on them, and they said September, so we are in September now, but haven't heard anything yet, but I'm going to be ready to get those written and completed, so we can get some things back here for our county and supplies and things that we would like to have. Let me see, oh, also, the Kiwanis Fall Festival's coming up, we're going to be in the parade, and this is the last parade of the year, so, we've been honored to be in all of them so far, and, you know, buzzing around, showing off our vehicle, and honored to be there to help people, hopefully it makes them feel more comfortable if they see us driving around sometime. But, anyway, we'll look forward to going to Kiwanis, small town with a big heart. So, oh, and one other thing we had, we had a fire meeting a week ago, over at Kiwanis, and a delicious Italian spaghetti meal, it was delightful. But anyway, we always have things like that where we can have learning, and all the firemen from all over the county come from every department, so it's a great time of learning and a time for activity and things like that, so. That's it, but we're vibrant, we're on the move, and still enjoying everything to try to help everybody as much as we can. Okay.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Good, Travis.
Sure.
I don't have a whole lot. I did email out the reports last week, any questions on those or anything?
Appreciate it.
Animal control, or questions, something?
Yes, okay.
Should see a transfer request that Jody put in last week for us, coming through today, so, I copy that, if you got any questions on it.
There was some pretty big transfers, is that a mistake in the budget, or?
Probably, I did the budget, so yeah, it probably wasn't a mistake, yeah, so.
Okay, that's, that's my only question.
Yep, it probably was.
That's no problem.
I do know, like, with Larry, he retired, and when he, when he retired out, we had to pay out all those vacation times, so.
Oh, so that now.
That we gave out, that's our.
So holiday pay a couple of.
Yeah, so, yeah, and I'm sure some of it's my mistakes as well, so between all of it, yeah, that's what it is, so. Hundred and thirty-three inmates this morning, forty-six Grant County, thirty-two Howard County, five Federals. We invoiced for a little over a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars last year, or last month, for holding out a county inmates. The Durangos, we've talked about, it seems like that's a broken record coming in here, but we did pick one up from Grissom today, Grissom Dodge, that they had since early July. They got it fixed, and they dropped another one off with the exact same issue, so, hopefully they can get that taken care of. We do have our annual jail inspection tomorrow, kind of piggyback off what Jerry said, we had the health department out there doing inspections, we had the fire marshal last week doing inspections, so, but then we've got our annual jail inspection tomorrow, so it'll be at nine o'clock in the morning tomorrow. With that, they go through, do a physical inspection, and then check budgets, and dietary requirements, things like this, just the whole.
I sent through them, one of them.
It's pretty rough, absolutely.
I couldn't stack the paper.
Yeah, yeah, and we have to have all that, Kathy does a great job getting all that stuff around, but I mean, they even have to have as far as even rodent contracts and insect contracts, you know, for, for the arrow, I mean, just everything that you have house play match, and has to be, has to be there, but, you know, when you get that good inspection, though, it helps us out in the long run with location, things like that, you know, we can sit back and say, hey, look, you know, we're doing what we're just told to do.
Both would be doing it.
Exactly, so we'll get everything hidden that Chad has around, and from inspection tomorrow, and. But I do know that maintenance building is moving, so they're supposed to start, I think, they were supposed to start last week, so I think anytime we break the ground on that, so.
That's good.
I'm pretty excited about that, so, thank you guys, so.
I know you had a big loss today, so.
Yes, thank you.
Your department eat anything from us, I'm sure, or.
We appreciate that, it's.
We should help you out any way we can.
Yeah, we appreciate that, auditor's office has been, everybody's been great, and it is huge, huge to fill, so, we're going to, we're going to really screw things up for a while, and try to, try to muddle through it.
How many years has she been there?
She's been with us for ten years-ish, she hired in with Chris, I think his first year, then I'm two years in, so she was, she was right at that nine, ten mark, so, you know, but, but our thoughts and prayers are with Brody and the band, so. Thank you.
Thank you. We were down to travel requests, you guys saw, looked those over?
Yep.
Questions?
No, I didn't have any.
Okay, I don't have any minutes here, do you have the financials, you guys any questions, concerns over any of the financials?
I didn't see them.
We've got one here, question mark, we approved it on nine three, so we'll just reapprove it as the utilities. Nineteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty-seven cents. If you're just going to sign, or we may have utilities here, flip search.
Okay.
Wheel surtax, forty-seven thousand, one hundred and forty dollars and seventy-six cents. We have a claim docket for the eight nine five three grant overpayment refund to the Indiana Department of Health of nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty-six cents. I think those were, and if we, that sounds hilarious, I don't know, but we.
Yeah. It does.
Okay, we have the insurance claim docket for eight fifteen to eight twenty-one, for the dispersal of a hundred and thirty-one thousand, eighty-seven dollars and eighty-seven cents. We have the insurance dispersal for eight twenty-two to eight twenty-eight of thirteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars and sixty cents. Payable claim docket for nine six and two hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty-three cents with nine, ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty cents with the deduction. Insurance claim docket for September fees of fifty-one thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars and eighty-two cents. We have insurance dispersal for eight twenty-nine to nine four of thirteen thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars and thirty-eight cents. Misland claims for nine sixteen of eight hundred and seventy thousand, ninety-five dollars and fifty-two cents. We have utilities, ten thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars and ninety-four cents. Council on Aging, fifty-three eleven grant reimbursement of seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars. We have the lint distribution, seven hundred and forty-three thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and eight cents. We have the riverboat distribution of seventy-five thousand, two dollars and fifty-six cents.
We got the riverboat, you didn't know that?
No, we should be making some good tax money on that.
Yeah, mouse to mouse, well, we're going to find out, we're going to spread it out, but yeah, it's something.
You're going to have to dredge the tippy so that it can float through?
Yeah. Dock it someplace there. Getting low way out there right now. Okay, we have a transfer request from Network Administration, fifteen thousand from IT Infrastructure to Computer Equipment, cover a negative balance, it says. We have public safety, the sheriff, twenty-seven thou, well, let's see, where's the total?
Forty, what's that, forty-something thousand on that one?
Yeah, forty, yeah, forty-seven thousand, fifty-five dollars and eleven cents, for extra help and insurance to deputy holiday compensation and sergeant.
That's the one we just talked about, too.
We have one from the jail for eighty-five thousand on health insurance, same thing, part-time and holiday compensation. Going off to the coroner for eight thousand, fifty dollars, from transportation to a deputy coroner, cleaning and transportation services performed by the deputy coroners. And we have an additional, we have appropriation request from Highway Department for thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars for the repair, repair billing and equipment for the highway shop installation and sighting. And we have a sixty-nine thousand dollar appropriation from the Highway Department for the new metal roof and repairs on the Kiwanis salt shed. We have any old business?
Yeah, I'll bring something up. Rochester High School, well, Rochester Schools, Janavance asked me to be an ambassador program with them this year, so I accepted it, that starts Thursday, there'll be like, two-hour classes, like, five or six of them a year, I think, for the year. They'll talk about budgeting in schools and how the school actually works, so if somebody asks what's going on in schools, I can report back to you guys and tell you, so.
It's a different ale.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Yes, it is.
That's it for me.
Okay, thank you for doing it, all right. Dave?
Nothing old, no.
All right, send me all your, if you have anything, old business, anybody? New business, right?
Don't think so.
Dave?
Yeah, we've had some discussions going on, we've got a lot of keys floating around that we really don't know where, and who's got what for the nine one one office and dispatch area, and would like to see a rekey job, new keys set to put out there, use.
I think that was one of Barry's suggestions.
It was.
So you can get a chat, I guess, and I mean, who does your, the Bob's Lotting Key do here?
All of our keys are accounted for, I'm not real sure where that's coming from, they were all signed out by Curtis, and they've all, in the transition that you guys have had here, they've all been accounted for, so.
Didn't see all the accounting of every key.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Everybody who currently has.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because there's supposed to be one, H R, H R's supposed to have them, and disprove it, and then we're supposed to have a key for that area. And we were looking for keys and couldn't find it, didn't know.
I don't know what keys you're missing, because that, when that building was done, everything was, was issued by Chris, we got everybody signed out, every key, and, like I said, through your guys' transition with everything here in the last three months, everything's accounted for, so.
So you'd have a list for Brittany, and who else?
Oh, absolutely.
Who has the keys and where they're at?
Yeah.
It'd be nice to get that to H R, and just see who has keys.
Yeah, Christine and I talked about that, I told her I'd get her a list of that, yeah, that's a hundred percent accounted for.
As long, as long as she knows who's got the key, that's all.
Absolutely, yeah.
That's right, yeah.
Okay, I don't know where that came from.
I don't, I think, we had a key down here at H R, that way if we had a situation we needed to get into, we don't have to chase someone out.
Yeah, we can get in.
Yeah, and I'll talk to you afterwards, but we'd probably do like a master key or something for, for access to that, but yeah.
That'd be cool, thank you, Travis, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anything else, Dave?
No, that was it.
New business for anybody? Okay, a public comment? You already said your piece. Okay, entertainment motion to recess them.
So moved.
Second, for all favor, motion carries three. Thank you, everybody. Can you, Jody, or maybe your first?